I was on a walk the other day and I ran into somebody who knew of the podcast. Pretty cool.
Oh, nice.
And he said to me, so it's a little different this season. I said, yeah. He says, I like it. I didn't understand it initially, how you had made that decision. I think your listeners would appreciate it. And I was like, oh, absolutely. So I thank Evan for this, for the prompt to say, hey, Peter, what's going on?
How did it change?
Right. So I've been thinking about this in the sense of like, the podcast was designed to help aspiring and early in their career and established leaders to learn from the experiences of other leaders. And as we approached season three, I thought to myself, we talk a lot, or at least I did for the first two seasons, about the power of shared leadership, the power of collaboration. And yet I wasn't doing it myself. And so when you and I met and started to have some conversations last February or so, or it was last March or so, and asking, hey, would you be interested at all in having some conversations with me before, you know, an interview? And then following. So we would chat, we'd do the interview, and then we would reflect together because it's that collaborative, having that thought partner and doing some collaborative thinking that really, I think, deepens the experience. So I want to say, first of all, Dave, and thank you for bringing that to my attention, that I just seemed to make a lot of sense in my mind. And then to say to you, Jamie, thank you so much for doing this each week to make time to chat.
I told you.
And to reflect, I really, I don't know if you've read the, I mean, basically you write these amazing LinkedIn posts when you push out the episode. And with all the details and like, here are some big ideas. It's like, this is great. And then I write, I repost that and I usually write a little like, three sentence blurb that says, I can't believe I get to do this. I can't believe that I'm honored that I, that you chose me. I can't believe that I get to do this with you. It is such fun for me. I am loving it. I love the research that goes with it. I love the new learning that goes with it. All these people that are amazing. And then secondarily, the things that they bring up. I'm like, I've never read that. I don't know what that is. And so I, God, it's one of the best parts of my job right now.
That's awesome. Well, I really am. I'm deeply grateful for it. So let's do this. Why don't we jump right into the conversation with our guests? Sometimes I know we like to maybe allude a little bit to what they're going to hear. But I actually think it's going to be better if we just jump right in today. And then at the end, I'll ask you, you know, what popped out to you? So, okay, you're listening to an imperfect leader, the superintendent's and leadership podcast. Imperfect leaders. Are you facing challenges filling open speech language pathologist positions within your district? Kind of a silly question because I know you are. Empat Speech understands the critical need for qualified professionals in your schools. They recognize that communication lies at the heart of academic success. And that's why they're dedicated to helping you bridge the gap by offering expert therapists and innovative telehealth solutions. Don't let open positions hinder your students' success. Partner with Empat Speech today and ensure every child in your district has access to the speech therapy they deserve. Empat Speech, E M P A T speech.com. Empowering students, empowering schools. Today on an imperfect leader, my guest is Kim Hartman. Kim is the CEO of KCH Solutions, a management services firm specializing in strategic planning, capacity building, and leading change. She holds a doctorate in education, master certification in learning design and technology, and she's also a certified public accountant. Wow. Kim, welcome to an imperfect leader.
Here, thank you so much for inviting me today. I'm excited to be here. I enjoyed meeting you in an air conference. And since then, I've become a very big fan of your podcast.
Oh, my gosh, that will get cut. I'll tell you that right now. I will also say that when I first met Kim, we were seated next to each other at a session. And you make small talk. And I think he said, so what do you do? And I said, I'm here with a group really interested in phone free schools. And I'm so glad that you asked to clarify because you said, what is a fun free school? I think something along those lines. I believe that's how I've retold the story to many people without your name, without attribution. Although now those who listen to podcasts will know.
But it's like, oh, could you imagine a fun free school? That is a terrible thing to be rallying for the country around. You and I sat together in San Diego and I was so thrilled to meet you. The session was around reclaiming the narrative in public education. And Scott Menzel, the superintendent from Scottsdale, was one of the panelists. I didn't realize that, but now I know that in preparing for this conversation, that you had served on the Scottsdale Board of Education. So you had a real knowledge and likely an appreciation for Scott and the work that he's done. With your own experience on the school board and your professional expertise in strategic planning and leading change, I'm wondering if you would talk a little about what you've observed, about the dynamics, that relationship between superintendent and school board members? Would you talk a little about what you've learned and the advice that potentially you give to others as they're doing their own strategic planning?
Yeah, I really appreciate that question. I love your focus on just the concept of relationship between the superintendent and the school board. Because relationship is everything in my experience. I would say this to my clients and absolutely in the context of the school board superintendent and the members as well. The reason why I think it's important is that when I think of relationship, I think of trust. And we all know the phrase that change only happens at the speed of trust on point with school boards. And what's so important about that is most important school board decisions and relationships with the superintendent, they're long term. In order for anything to really happen, you have to have trust because you have to trust the passage of time that will actually get to it. Yeah, I think that's relationship is key and it's synonymous with trust as well.
I think you're totally right. As a superintendent enters into this relationship with a board that's hired them, that there is a real challenge of trying to build trust quickly because they've given you this mandate of go make positive change. And we've hired you for a particular reason, maybe some things that you said in the interview process or what you said publicly, or your track record. And then the board changes over time. New members come in, some retire, some win elections, some don't. And now the superintendent is using those initial marching orders with a new board that may have different opinions and thoughts on that. And I'm curious, how have you steered your clients around those kinds of relationships? Where the, where it is about trust and it is about relationship, yet the dynamics have changed. The people that hired you were no longer the people who are employing you.
Yeah, sometimes I use the phrase, you have to go sideways to go forward. Take the time to build the relationships to move forward on trust. I also love the saying, you have to go slow to go fast, which is the same notion of it really takes time to build that trust, especially when there's turnover in the board. One of the challenges, I think, for the superintendent is that a lot of that responsibility actually falls on their shoulders. It should, you would hope that everybody shows up the same day where you have two categories of people sometimes. Those where you have to earn trust and those where you have to lose trust. And you wish everyone would just show up with, I trust you, we're all on the same page, we're looking, we're addressing the same goals, we have the same aspirations. But the reality is that just isn't that way. So earning trust is really important. I've seen this happen, you know, I've seen it in the professional world, the education world, really from my doctorate as well. And there's this notion of accountability between the director provider relationship. The director being the board, literally of directors, or in this case, the governing board. And then the provider being the superintendent, because the reality is the superintendent really does have one boss, which is the board, right? And unfortunately, it's not one person. It's five or seven people or whatever it is. But what's really interesting, and the data will prove this out, and I've seen it in process, is that if there is trust, the directors will be more outcome focused. If there lacks trust, they will be more process focused. And if you speak about that, it's really important because if you are a superintendent, would you rather be measured on outcome? Or would you prefer to be measured daily on the processes?
Yeah. So this summer, we've had the Olympics and I imagine one would prefer to be judged on where they cross the finish line as opposed to how they leave the blocks in terms of using a metaphor of a track and field race.
Yeah, exactly. Right? Particularly if you tie this back to what we said in terms of our school board aspirations and goals are long term. There should be milestones where you check in, but not on a daily operating basis. We should be at the governing board basis. So why I think this is really important learning as well is if you, as a superintendent, notice you're being held more accountable and processed than outcome, chances are there's trust, there's a trust gap. And so you may need to go sideways to go forward to really get to that place you want to be, which is really outcome focused at the end of the day. So I just think that's a kind of an interesting back base data research idea on accountability. And then I've actually seen it in practice, like significant on this.
How do you shift that? I imagine those who are focused on process are asking and questioning every decision that you're making and how you're spending your day and what you're doing and all those types of questions. And outcome are those who say, we look forward to our next meeting, either monthly or twice a month, board meeting where you bring information and we get to see over time how we're progressing towards the goals we set each summer, if that's when they do their retreat or things like that. How does one begin to shift? And I guess maybe the answer is just like, once you have built a meaningful and genuine relationship, that will naturally shift. I'm wondering, do you have any tricks of the trade that where people could contact you, but certainly where you might be willing to share a little bit about? How do you begin to shift out of that or disrupt that pattern of behavior?
Yeah, this is one of, it's a great question. And we're always trying to build trust. I am sure there's not a superintendent out there that isn't trying to build trust and relationship with all their constituency, school board being, being just one of them. It takes time, right? It does have to be earned. If there are characteristics that I would speak to, whether as a client or even a superintendent, it's all about, it's all about consistency, clarity, and I think inclusivity. And you might want to throw transparency in there because unless world of social media.
Although I really liked the word clarity over transparency. I had a guest, Avis Williams from New Orleans, who said, Peter, people really don't need transparency. They don't need to know every bit of the decision. What they want is clarity. And I was like, oh, I really like that. So I really like clarity.
Yeah, I would be that too.
This past year, I wrote a book and then the leadership model that I use to advise others, there's this dimension called nested patterns. And it's really like the muscle of an organization's work. So you've got like the heart of one's work and you've got the mind and then there's the muscle. And inside that dimension, there is a term, high levels of collaboration. Given your own background in both corporate and nonprofit sectors, what strategies do you recommend to superintendents and school boards to foster that more collaborative and productive relationship? So maybe that's an extension of our previous question, but I'm interested, what might be some concrete ways that people do that? Or are there specific practices or frameworks from your own consultancy work? Maybe that we could use to, to help benefit in this context?
Yeah, I love this question on highly collaborative teams. It's really been a personal passion of mine from the consulting in the for-profit world as well as the nonprofit and education as well. And in my for-profit world, I would have referred to it as high performance teams, highly collaborative teams. And what got me really curious, what I think is really curious about this is in my consulting world, I became intrigued with why some teams, particularly in complex decisions or challenges, why are some successful and why are some not successful? What are the elements that created success for them? Because the data will also say that 70% of strategic initiatives fail. And a big key to it is collaboration at the end of the day. When I was on the school board, and like, this is the work of school boards and superintendents, it's complex work. It's system level, system wide, not short-term, long-term, complex work. And so when I actually did my doctorate, I focused exactly on that is how do teams actually sell successfully, solve in a sustainable way, complex solutions. And there's a couple of things I came across and actually a little bit of a framework that I built. But I'm happy to share kind of some of the pieces, elements of you, if it's something that you think would be helpful.
I think people really do listen for some specifics they can take back to their own teams.
Okay. So here's a couple of things. So collaboration, once again, we're going to go be on this trust theme. It's the notion of team, so like team psychological safety. Okay. And this is work of Amy Edmondson.
Yep, at Harvard Business. Yep, yeah. It's amazing work. Amazing.
Yeah. And I did a deep dive in it and tried to understand why that's important and how it's important and how does it show up? And what do you do to actually achieve it? And what's really important about it is first, kind of the definition of, of team psychological safety is when a team believes they have a belief system that they can take personal risks. For me, in public education and really the complex problem solving, think about it, whether it's achievement opportunity, pandemic, learning loss, social emotional learning programs, all those things right there, complex. There's not a simple answer. To achieve that team psychological safety, it's really important to understand, one, do you have it? And two, where you're at and how you can achieve it. She has a little bit of, Dr. Edmondson actually created kind of a seven question liquor like score self-assessment on how to assess team psychological safety. And when I put clients, educators through this collaboration training, I call it adaptive organizational change model. But one of the first things we look at is team psychological safety. And it's always interesting in that the results, I always say, you take it, you do the assessment, but then give your team the assessment too. So you've got, not only do you have your assessment of where it is, but obviously your team, you've got your stakeholders, you understand where they're at too. The other thing I, this because I'm a numbers, little number cruncher in the background, I always say, look, so liquor like scale, you're going to look on a scale of one to seven and one being a little, seven being a lot, and the higher the better. But it's also important to look at the standard deviation of each one. Because for, back to Amy Edmondson's definition, for a belief to be true, a belief system be true, all members must believe it. Right? So just because you believe it or one or two members believe it, it's not enough. If that standard deviation is significant, then once again, go sideways to go forward. You need to go build the conditions for risk taking. And that's really key, I think, to all highly collaborative teams.
Thank you so much. Oh, my gosh, I'm so excited by that example in particular. Just wonderful. Thank you. If you're just joining us, this is an imperfect leader, the superintendent's and leadership podcast. I'm Peter Steepleman and our guest today is Kim Hartman, the CEO of KCH Solutions. Kim, how does the term an imperfect leader resonate for you?
I think that's actually a terrific question. First of all, I love the name of the podcast, imperfect leader, because I think it fits, it's the reality. For me, an imperfect leader, it means the ability to take risks, which ties directly to our prior conversation, and creating the conditions for others to take risk, i.e. team psychological safety. So for me as a leader or yourself as a leader or superintendent, I think it requires a lot of vulnerability and the willingness not to be right all the time. And in terms of creating the conditions for others, it really ties back to that team psychological stick safety. Are team members allowed to make mistakes? Can they surface problems? Can you be an outlier in a group, right? And not be afraid to bring up that, oh, that one crazy idea, but it really actually sometimes has the seeds of something really important. In terms of imperfect leader, I love the fact that it implies almost that you are imperfect. You have to be imperfect if you're going to be willing to take risks and be vulnerable. And those are the things we need to do to serve kids more.
We'll be right back. Hey, district leaders, I know you already know this. In schools worldwide, cell phones are posing real challenges on student engagement and mental wellbeing. And I want you to meet yonder, a proud sponsor of an imperfect leader. And let me share this story from a visit I made to some schools in Silicon Valley. I asked some kids what they liked about yonder. And after some funny looks, they shared that actually with yonder, teachers don't have to battle with them over phones anymore. In fact, one kid said to me, he didn't have to worry anymore about his parents texting him in class. And the kid next to him like sort of shoved him, goes, texting? My mom used to FaceTime me in class. I want to introduce you to a support system that increases teaching and learning. Want you to discover why a million students choose yonder daily. Minimize distractions, maximize learning potential. To learn more, go to overyonder.com, Y O N D R. We're back for segment two of an imperfect leader called imperfect leadership in after action. My guest today is Kim Hartman, the CEO of KCH Solutions. And in this segment, as we do each week, we ask our guests to deconstruct the decisions that they made and then we discuss it. So Kim, what happened?
All right. First of all, I love this part of your program because I call it action, learning reflection in my work. And it's really important as continuous learning. All right. So my scenario for you. So we had participated in, and actually helped lead a large community-based, student-focused initiative. Okay? So it was really focused on improving the conditions for our title one learning community to continue to optimize their true personal potential. Okay? So we did a lot of the right things. We had the right stakeholders. We were very inclusive. We had district and school administrators, teachers, parents, students, key community partners, including council members, university leaders, philanthropic partners. We had really the right group of community stakeholders. We had the right process. We had outside facilitators who were trained in design thinking. It was like almost a world cafe-like atmosphere to create all these ideas and begin to prioritize them. And being the consultant is, it's just funny looking back, we had the right people, the right conditions, the right process. Yet we didn't necessarily get the outcome.
Oh, my gosh.
Going to get, at least the first time through.
Right. Okay. And, and that's a really important part of, of leadership is understanding and recognizing when a mid-course correction is needed. So if I understand correctly, and I think you've been really careful not to call it like a turnaround model or something like that, because that carries with it its own, its own definitions and treatment. Is it fair to say you were looking at re-envisioning or revisioning a, a particular, the way that the district is operating or setting appropriate goal, or maybe even asking that sort of overarching question? Because you mentioned the world cafe is what do we want to create together? And then, and then doing that, really identifying what is the goal, like the one thing that we're going to work on? Is that sort of what you're describing?
Yeah, it is fair. And I'll just for a little bit more context. So this, the school district was includes 30 school, five K through 12 learning communities, about 22,000 students. And what we noticed is within some learning communities, we had a high graduation and college going rate. And in one learning community, it was an outlier. So why is that the case? Why is an out of five difference? So it was really focused on high school graduation and then college and career readiness.
Gotcha. So you arrived knowing which community needed attention and you had all the right people coming together to say, and we want to be a part of that.
Right. The right people, the right process and the data.
Okay. So then the first question is what got overlooked? And so it sounds like you've got some thoughts on that.
Yeah, I would say there are probably one or two things. So what I think got overlooked is everybody was all in on focusing on this outcome that we wanted. But what I don't think, and looking back on it, what we didn't take the time to do is to get a true understanding of each partner, right? We have district level, community level, philanthropic level. We didn't take the time to understand each stakeholder's non-negotiables. And I'd also say on the flip side of it, and this is what needs to be true for me to be able to move forward. So I think if we would have had more clarity on this is what we need and this is what we're not willing to give up in this scenario, would have been really useful to have that conversation just on the front end.
Right. So you've got a learning community that has historically, it seems like, not met its potential. And there was a sense of urgency. And so everybody cared. And then looking back, it is what may have gotten overlooked was going to each group individually, because you make decisions with the people most impacted and each may bring a different image of what success looks like. What does, and you were working on maybe absence of a shared image of what success is.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And I would also add to that, and clearly defining success as well as the problem. There's a phrase I love, which is a problem half solved is a problem well stated. And if you go through that process, you begin, you get much more clear on how everybody perceives that problem. What are they willing to do to impact that outcome to get to that success? So yeah, if we would have spent a little bit more time really getting clarity, more clarity around that, that would have been really advantageous.
An example from my own experience was the idea, we were very much influenced by Deborah Meyer's work, by the Harlem Children's Zone, Jeffrey Kennedy's work. And the idea of potentially creating a community school in one of our most underperforming schools that had the highest rate of mobility. And so could we tackle mobility? Could we provide year-round services? Could we have wraparound? Could we do all the kinds of things that we know that help schools thrive? And in the conversations, the piece that we overlooked was the thought from other schools with a similar situation of what they were going to lose. Or your wealthy school in other parts of our community, because we were 300 square miles, would say, what are we going to lose? Because you're going to be taking money and investing in this, in this community school. So I imagine, while you haven't stated it, that there may have been some similarities if you haven't defined a shared image of what the problem is and what the solution might be, that new narratives get written about what they're going to lose in your investment in others.
Yeah, absolutely. And there's more than one possible outcome, right? So being really clear on what the parameters are, helps everyone get aligned with what their time, talent, or treasure, whatever it is, get aligned around what that particular outcome needs to be or can be together.
What'd you learn about relationships or what new relationships were formed?
This has been the theme of our whole conversation. I don't think you can ever spend too much time investing in the relationship side of it. People are, and in this scenario too, everyone was very well-intended. But understanding each individual's why they're there, why they're willing, what matters to them most is really important in kind of system level work, because it does take up the sum of all the pieces, all those stakeholders to really move a significant outcome forward. But it also takes time to understand and develop with deeper relationships and understand individuals why and what they and their organizations are willing to commit to get to that outcome.
Is there anything that surprised you in terms of what someone was willing to give up or not willing to give up?
Yes. What surprised me is that once we started having that conversation, we were able to successfully right-size the problem and right-size the solution. And it was, it's an outstanding solution. In fact, what we ended up doing was creating a college graduation guaranteed to your graduation, college and career scholarship to any student that was interested in continuing to pursue that. And so by pulling the district, the community members, the philanthropy community together, we just sent our 145th student on to fully paid for two-year college or career and piece of their education. So starting community college onto college, career. And so that's a wonderful outcome, but it took us a couple of tries to actually reach that conclusion. Yeah, being persistent with relationships as well, not questioning behavior, but really understanding the why, you can get to really just an amazing outcome. So.
What frustrated you?
I guess I would say that in some ways, it was a very choreographed start, very much thoughtful, who's there, process we're going to do, the participants, but it was, we didn't get the outcome that we wanted. So initially it felt like a failure until we stood back and we did that after learning reflection and realized, okay, what did work? You were willing to do this, you're willing to do this, you're willing to this. Well, our, our goal is still getting more students access to college and career opportunities. So we could do this. Let's do it through this model. So that start and stop and then having to like readjust was a little bit frustrating, but in the end, what important thing goes straightforward? Not many.
Didn't, it's true. That's true. In fact, then it's completely choreographed and inauthentic if it's just a start to finish. It's not. It is, it needs to meander to some extent and have these cycles of inquiry and realize that mid-course corrections are important. My, my own experience, as you were describing your scenario comes to mind is this, we were involved in a cradle to career conversation as a community. And again, we brought together the right people. And it seemed like college, career and life readiness was going to be where we were going to put much of our focus. And then the goal led into how will we maintain the enthusiasm, the energy and the commitment from the community if we're not focused on something more immediate? So let's talk about kindergarten readiness. And then it was, yes, kindergarten readiness is important and so is attendance. So if we're focused on attendance, then we could be really supportive. And then it became somewhat muddied where we were now focused on eight goals as opposed to one. And when you're focused on eight things, you're focused on nothing. And maybe I'm airing my own frustration on the question for you. So my apologies, you are my therapist today. frustration on the question for you. So my apologies, you are my therapist today. I'm curious, did any of that sort of bleed into the work that you were doing?
Absolutely. If you're, if you're a system thinker, you come in from that kind of system thinking approach, you are looking more systemically. As we're talking about increasing the number of students going off to college, you really have to go upstream and really, it's.
It's a stock flow map, right? So your stock is, we're going to increase our, our number of graduates who are headed to a two-year, four-year internship, military, whatever. So there are things that you need to do upstream to get there.
Exactly. And here's the best part of it is that this group, once they started seeing to your scenario where they're seeing the results, we're seeing these, we're saying, we just sent 145 kids off to college and career. Now, what can we do to send more? Okay, now we have to go upstream.
Oh, I love it. Yeah.
And case, who's are you reading? Middle.
However, you're reframing it in a way that we failed to, which is, those are strategies to get to this goal. And instead, we were identifying each one as a new goal. Oh, then we got to focus on third grade reading, that's our goal. And, and yes, those will have specific strategies that will feed into that stock. Once that goes up, we know it will contribute. But we didn't talk about, this is our ultimate goal. And then we have all these other things that we want to do to help influence that. I'd like to now build a time machine, go back in time and take this learning from you today. So it sounds like in the end, what was something that was good is that 145 kids getting a, with completely debt free, getting their two-year education, which allows them with their industry recognized credential or to move on to a four-year school. That's in its own right, an amazing, amazingly successful outcome. Was there anything else that you saw as a, something that was good that came out of the situation?
Everything that we are actually already talked about in terms of just the community just continuing to reinvest and recognize, you do have to go, you have to look at more systemically, go upstream. And that takes time, right? That's just not where everybody's going to come from, because like in your scenario, you want those quick wins. You want to see the results. But once you see those, if people are connected to that outcome, they start to see the opportunity in a much richer way, which is, just continues to increase the impact.
In the end, this podcast, it's really, has been designed to help aspiring and early in their career and established leaders. I want them to learn from the experience of other leaders. So with that said, what advice would you give to an aspiring leader?
What I think is valuable for aspiring leaders is to understand when they have a technical versus an adaptive problem. And what I mean by that is we show up on day one with the degrees and the experiences to solve a lot of technical problems. But adaptive problems are ones in which the problem and the solution are novel, ill-defined and challenge belief systems. And if that doesn't sound like a description for most art school district challenges and opportunities, I don't know what does. And what I would encourage is that, this is where I really did a lot of work in my doctorate and workshops and things like that, is when you have an adaptive problem, you really need to meet it with an adaptive leadership model, an adaptive culture, and an adaptive mindset. Because when problems and solutions are novel, ill-defined and challenge belief systems, a technical solution and a technical approach and throwing subject matter experts is not going to solve it. There's a lot more to that conversation, but just recognizing that when you've got something that's complex, and it's really probably adaptive, you need a new approach, which really it comes down to being very inclusive in the process. So I would, I would share that as just notice, probably when things aren't working, it's probably because you have an adaptive problem, you're relying on technical solutions, what's happening.
That is excellent advice. My guest today was Kim Hartman, the CEO of KCH Solutions. And Kim, I'm grateful. Some learning that I've taken from today is the importance of relationships, no doubt, the importance of psychological safety, and psychological safety when it comes to not just do most people on the team feel as if they are included and safe, that all people, right? The, I think what we learned was it was the Google teams, that they thought that they could have all these different people on these teams, and that would make it a high performing team. But rather, it was the psychological safety piece. This last piece around change is such an, is an important learning as well. But also really the importance of taking the time to understand each stakeholder's perspective. And really early on in our conversation today, you talked about that, taking that step forward and then recognizing, oop, nope, before I take that step forward, I need to make sure that I'm harvesting the wisdom of the individuals to my left and my right before you take that next step forward. And that was great learning for me. And it actually conjured this image when we were talking about systems thinking of the Desmond Tutu phrase around, we have to stop pulling people out of the river and go to the heads of the river and find out why people are following you. And so thank you so much for your time today. This was so much fun.
Yeah, thank you so much, Peter. I really enjoyed it. This is great work. So thank you for having me today.
And so we're back. And as I promised, I'm going to ask you right now, is there anything in the episode that popped out to you?
Okay, I have a good one, a really good one. And I'm, I've, this is where like this now coming up a couple of times. And so I'm interested as we go forward. I think I should interview you.
Oh, wow. That'd be funny.
You're.
The script.
My colleague Jessica said that. She's like, you asked him a question during the last episode with Rachel, Dr. Rachel White, where I said, how did it make you feel? Meaning her findings about superintendents being humanized. And you said, wow. Ah, let me talk about that later.
Oh, it's so good. What a great answer.
Yeah, I ditched that one. Or I sort of avoided it like the matrix.
Oh, this is so good. This came up for me as it relates to Kim Hartman. And the thing that I thought was, this is like me picking a, a little bone with her, that I wish I had been on the interview to get her to talk, to ask this question. And I think people do this all the time. I wrote, why do folks use the term, use the terms, relationship and trust without ever actually explaining what that means to them? Those terms are broad, and they are massively different based on cultural orientation, how I understand, how I was raised to understand that idea. And I wrote, I wrote this question down. Peter, what does trust mean to you? Oh, that's fantastic. You know, as you were just saying this, and I'm not doing a matrix mode where I'm going to ditch, at least I hope not to try to avoid. You mentioned the fact that how one person interprets any word, right? And so this is the idea of having a shared image of what, whatever it means, whatever success means, whatever trust means, whatever relationship means. And I thought to myself, how similarly, the way that we perceive ourselves could be radically different than the way that others perceive us. And so when I say to you, oh, I trust you, and I haven't defined what that means, that may leave you in limbo because my actions don't necessarily demonstrate it. There was a time where I was really interested in the marketing relationship that we were starting. We were going to allow businesses to advertise and, and our chief financial officer was in charge of that. And I was really curious about it because it was a new, it was a sort of a new foray into the business of schools, allowing individuals to had exclusive rights to particular things, and they would pay for it. And that would be a revenue generator for the district. So everything from uniforms to scoreboards to access to our employees, all those kinds of things. So I was really curious. So I kept asking questions about it. And I would say to this person, I trust you. I did. I didn't know much. I wasn't in the, in the business of business. I was in the business of schools and education and teaching and learning. And so I was curious. However, I didn't define what the word trust meant. And there came a point where I asked another question about it. And I went back to my office, and then she followed me with this binder. And then she walked and she dropped it with great intentionality to really get that, that boom, right? Dropped it on my desk or on the table and said, it's yours now. Like, you clearly want to do this. Or you, this, you don't trust me. Or something along those lines, where I heard, you don't trust me. And I thought to myself, wow, we have radically different ideas of trust. Her idea of trust was, you don't need to worry about it. I'm going to make you look good, and we're going to do great things. And for me is, I trust you. And that also means that I'm curious about learning with you and from you. And that doesn't necessarily, my questions don't, should not be interpreted as a, a lack of trust or, or a degree of distrust. So I do think there was a cultural thing there. Everything from, and I would say intersectionality to some degree of, you know, there was a, a gender difference, you know, male, female. There were suburban slash city versus rural, Jewish, and the constant questioning and arguing and debating and, and then walking away as if like, I wasn't upset, you know, kind of thing. And so anyway, I would say, what does trust mean to me? For me, it absolutely is those things, is to say, you have the authority to be responsible for others and for things. And that also can mean that there are times where you ought to be questioned and challenged, because trust is, we do this together, and yet you have the final decision, go for it, you know, kind of things. So I would say that. How about for you?
I'm going to let my definition pass, because that one's good enough. Like, that one was great.
I just, that, that was, that was a point for me where I was like, she used the terms, relationship and trust a lot.
Yes.
And I was like, oh, I want, to your point, I want clarity here.
Yeah. Well, and it's interesting, because she also talked about the speed of trust. And of course, you know, that's a Covey reference. And, and so I get that. And to have a school board with seven members, that trust looks different. And so I had a huge aha from our conversation, where she talked about that if there is trust, your school board or directors will be more outcome focused. And if there is a lack of trust, they're going to be process focused, and they're going to micromanage. And that will hinder your progress towards your larger goals, because they are constantly watching what you're, how you're doing it, not the results that you're getting. And I thought that was profound. That, that to me was, I thought, real gold for any leader listening is to understand when you're being questioned, what are the questions? What's the substance of that question? And it will reveal to you the level of trust that is there.
I wrote the same quote down. That stood out to me as well. I wondered about the concept of both at the same time. I understood the dichotomy that she was explaining. And what I think is interesting is that I would want my board asking me about processes with clarity of outcome. In fact, I wrote down your metaphor, you know, like the track and field metaphor. I'm like, oh, this, me criticizing my partner. Oh, that's overly simplistic. It's not the same. It's not the same. The running schools, as you know, as you know, good, it's gracious, Columbia, the big district, learning and social emotional development and child development, all of those things in a school structure is so complex that any overly simplified metaphor to describe it's this to that is never true. That will never be true. It goes in all of these directions all the time. Why? Is everybody's plan is great? We all have amazing ideas about what to do, and then people show up, and it goes kablooey.
I will agree that it isn't a confined race where everyone has their lane and they're running. I would say the metaphor was, was designed.
No, I'm going to argue a little bit because.
Yeah, let's go, let's go, let's go.
What I didn't.
I actually want to think of the Steeplechase, the steeplechase. It actually goes, everybody goes in different directions.
Steepleman doesn't like the steeplechase because your feet get, your feet get wet. And I don't like that wet. I would say this though, what I didn't get to fully develop or even further develop, or maybe in my mind, I thought like, this seems pretty clear is, there's so much work that goes into before you even get to the starting block. And I think what I wanted to say is, there's so much process and planning and strategy that you didn't design yourself, that lots of people were a part of. And then you're there at the starting gate. And you ought not to be judged by how you leave the blocks, but rather how you finish the race. Because so often, to your point, so many children come to school with radically different experiences, and they ought not to be judged by how they entered kindergarten, but rather what experiences and opportunities they had as they left 12th grade. Did they have internship opportunities? Do they have opportunities to join the military? They have opportunities to go to a two-year school with the idea of going to a four-year school, or a two-year school to have that industry recognized credential? Were they entering the workforce? Do, you know, all those kinds of things.
Yeah.
That you want to be able to plan for and know that, don't judge how they entered. It's unfair and, and not right. So you're right. If, you know, sometimes you, we want the person to say back to you, just like you just did now, what do you mean by that? Because that seems over simplistic for, you know, when people say that, you know, schools are not brain surgery, you're like, yeah, it's more complex. Oh, it's our rocket. Yeah, you're right. It's more complex. Do people who, who are rocket scientists also say it's not like rocket science? That's funny. I mean, what sometimes seems to be a really simple act can be really, really difficult. But I think that's a whole thing between complex and complicated. We could talk about that another time. However, my gosh, even simple things can be really hard. Like, my goodness, I put in a door, I put a new door in our house, and that was hard. It was so hard. I really struggled. It took a long time, it took two full days. It's like, oh, this is why people do this for a living. Like, Lord, this is hard.
I don't.
You know, amazing. So that's funny. I like that little argument. This is why I like your reframe of it. Later on, she talks about the work of superintendents and boards being system level work, not short term, but long-term and complex. And this is why being outcome focused as a board is very difficult. Because it's long-term and complex, the outcomes, you have to measure shorter term things toward longer term things. And they have to be uber clear, uber clear. This is why I actually harped, I was like, yes, you actually need outcome and process. Because talking to me about my process and, or how we process things together, even this point of like defining trust, like that, that's worth talking about. And figuring, what's the best way for us to do this?
I see. So you're weaving in, yes, there's process as part of this outcomes work. And I think what she may have been saying is, when there's a lack of trust, all they're concerned about is process. Who'd do write that email back? Did you tell me about the speech you're about to make in terms of your superintendent's report? It's all the kind of nonsense. Are we really having chicken at the board retreat? You know, just like, just garbage that has nothing to do with, wait, wait, I'm talking about third grade reading scores. That's what I'm talking about. Kids who are eligible for free reduced lunch meals are reading on a sixth grade level as compared to their peers who pay for lunch, who are reading on a ninth grade level when they're eighth graders. So like, we've got a real discrepancy, and you want to know whether or not we're having chicken. And so I would like to talk about the process of making sure that we work all the way back to, how do we make sure that kids are making not just adequate, like exponential progress towards reading on grade level and above. And that I think goes to something that you're advocating for, which are like rapid cycles of inquiry to sort of see, are we making the progress we had hoped to make? And if not, what's our mid course correction that we're going to need to take? Right?
And when inevitable challenges, you know, those, 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 I don't know, people describe them as putting out fires. I'd say like, like they're balloons that you have to notice and try and recapture the string of, right? The helium balloon that's starting to float away, and you pull it back down. When those come up, and those floats start to float away, where do they tie? Don't just follow the balloon. Like, you've got to pull that back to the other balloons or the others, the other things that are on the ground. It's not just like, follow the balloon over there, go over there, which ends up happening. Like people, like, no, the most important thing is this random thing over here. And that's not tied to anything that we already said is outcome focused.
That's an even better metaphor than my race, my racing one. Because I'm thinking, actually, I have this image in my head of, you know, if you have so many goals, so if each one of those is a balloon, you are grabbing each balloon and almost you're like, remember the Muppet Movie, Gonzo? You're like Gonzo flying up, you're taking off into the sky and that's it. You're, you and your goals have left, have left the atmosphere. So anyhow, this is great. I can't wait for next week. I can't wait to see you again. You've been listening to An Imperfect Leader, the Superintendent's and Leadership Podcast. I'm Peter Steepleman.
And I'm Jamie Adnan-san.
And we will see you next week.
Hey, Jamie.
See you next week, folks. Yeah. Okay, bye.
Music for an imperfect leader was written and arranged by Ian Varley. Sam Falbough created our artwork, a wood print inspired Deribadale butterfly. Remember, imperfect leadership is not a scarlet letter. It's a badge of honor. It recognizes that serving as a lead learner is about being a vulnerable leader, an empathetic leader, compassionate leader. We are proud to be imperfect leaders. So join us next time for another episode of An Imperfect Leader, the Superintendent's and Leadership Podcast. At the end of every interview that we have for teacher candidates, we will say, what questions do you have for us? And they will always ask, well, what kind of support can I expect? And we will always say, well, don't worry, we'll give you a mentor. But it's not real mentorship. I mean, it's support with the difficult kid or the field trip form or the grade card, but it isn't coaching. That's where partners like Ed Connective step in. They provide observation and feedback with practice. That's real coaching. Their mission is to ensure that every student thrives by facilitating exceptional educator growth. So whether it's science of reading, whether it's leadership development, whether you're trying to build the best recruitment and retention efforts, check out edconnective.com. retention efforts, check out edconnective.com.